The city council meeting will come to order. Thank you all for joining us for this special meeting on a Monday night for the swearing in of our new council members. Please rise as you are able. Give your attention to Mayor Leck, Michelle De La Isla, for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor Will Gass. If I could ask a huge favor, I have invited several leaders of the faith to be here today, and members of the Indian community, the Bangladeshi community, if you guys could get closer here to the front so that we could all pray together for our city. Pastor Clark. Thank you. If you would all join me in prayer. Heavenly God, thank you. Thank you for this marvelous day. Thank you for the ride it has been being a council member with these exemplary leaders of this community. Father God, I have asked for all these leaders in the faith community to come forward because we all worship a God and we all want to be better people for our city. For the next four years, Lord God, we are asking for wisdom, we are asking for unity, we are asking for your grace to come upon this city. Father, tonight, be with all the families that are here, that are supporting every single council member, every staff member in this city. Be with every single person of service. Be with us, God. Give us wisdom, give us guidance, so that we could lead, not by self, but by grace and compassion. It is in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I ask that municipal court judge Dox Darty Buck Bixell, I didn't say that very well, come forward for the swearing in. Mayor De La Isla will be first.
In the main executive team of the M-14 team to come and stand behind us. If I can just pull the larger, and if you guys could be here behind me, there's a reason for that.
You, Michelle De La Isla, do solemnly swear.
I, Michelle De La Isla, do solemnly swear.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor of the city of Topeka.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor of the city of Topeka.
So help you, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
I'll just take a second to explain the debacle behind me. I was very purposeful in asking all the faith leaders to come forward, and I was very purposeful in having the people behind me. I have said from the moment that I was running for office, as a leader, I can't do anything. I need all of you to work on this community. I did not become mayor because I ran for office. I was able to become elected because all of you supported me and the people behind me supported me. So I just want to say thank you to all of them for all their support. I, Karen Heller, do solemnly swear.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
As city council member for District Number One of the city of Topeka.
A city council member for District Three of the city of Topeka.
So help you, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I, Sylvia E. Ortiz, do solemnly swear.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For the District Number Three of the city of Topeka.
For the District Number Three of the city of Topeka.
So help you, God.
So help me, God. Congratulations. I just want to say, this is grandson number one and grandson number two, and this is the reason why I'm here, it's for our kids. Thank you. Councilwoman Emerson, or otherwise known as Henderson.
If we swear him in as Henderson, does he have to say that way all year?
Excellent.
No, use yours, please. Lincoln Bible, is it?
Raise your right hand, please. You, Anthony Emerson, do solemnly swear.
I, Anthony Emerson, do solemnly swear.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For District Number Four of the city of Topeka.
For District Number Four of the city of Topeka.
So help you, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll do just real quick, I want to introduce my wife Allison, my daughter Reagan, my daughter Sydney, my son Andrew has his first basketball game tomorrow, and my mom Crystal. So I really appreciate all you guys' support over the last year and a half, and I'll need it again in the next two years, so, thank you.
You, Michael Padilla.
I, Michael Padilla.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For District Number Five of the city of Topeka.
For District Number Five of the city of Topeka.
So help you, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'd just take a minute. This is a long, long ambition of mine. I spent 34 years with the Topeka Police Department, and then another 10 and a half serving the state of Kansas, and I felt that I still had a lot to offer this city. I know my family has worked hard for this city, and until I can't do it anymore, I want to continue to serve this city, and I thank my family and my friends for supporting me in that effort. Thank you.
I, Erin Mays.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For District Number Seven of the city of Topeka.
For District Number Seven of the city of Topeka.
So help you, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but since everybody else has, I guess I will too. I just want to thank my lovely wife Tara and my young boys for everything that they've given up so that I could pursue the being elected to the city council, and I know the next four years are going to be tough, and I'd appreciate your continuing support. Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, Mr. Mike Lesser and his family.
I, Michael Lesser, solemnly swear.
That you will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For District Number Nine of the city of Topeka.
For District Number Nine of the city of Topeka.
So help you, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I want to take a second to introduce my mother Elsie, my wife Erin, my son Parker, and my son Dylan. And I also want to thank my mother for making a trip to Wichita to pick my son Dylan up from school today, and thank him for getting up at 4:30, remember 4:30 tomorrow? So we can make it back. Thank you.
If we could please just one more time extend our appreciation, not so much for the council members, but for the families and the supporters in this endeavor. Before we begin with the program, I had requested of one of our local poets, Annette Billings, to do a poem that will start us off with the council year right. She uses her prose to discuss issues of social justices and injustices in such a fashion that sometimes our shame gets up and we don't listen to the message, but she does it in such a fashion that we actually enjoy it and embrace it. Annette called me earlier today and she let me know that she was not able to make it. However, in her stance, we will have Champagne Lloyd come and recite the poem to start us off tonight.
What you allow lingers. What you allow lingers, and what you invite, it stays put. So speak rudely to discord and all its sullen siblings. Turn a cold shoulder to bigotry in all its disguises. Ignore the doorbell when evil rings, and stop violence at the door like an uninvited stranger. Usher in joy like a long-lost friend. Take its coat, its hat, entertain peace, chat up compassion, pamper generosity, and give the guest room to justice. Sweep the porch and put out a welcome mat for goodness. Make your life poorly suited for anything except love. And when hate knocks, act as if you've moved. Thank you.
We now proceed to the council agenda. There are no presentations or proclamations at this time. We move forward to the consent agenda, if the clerk would read.
Roll call.
Oh, the roll call. New.
Mayor De La Isla.
Here.
Councilmembers Heller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Padilla.
Here.
Jensen.
Present.
Mays.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Lesser.
Here.
Now we proceed with the consent agenda, if the clerk would read.
A are minutes of the regular meeting of December 19, 2017, and January 2, 2018, and special meeting of December 28, 2017, and there are no applications.
Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Oh.
Please vote yes.
Please vote yes. We now move to applications. There's none?
No.
Okay. We move now into action items. Item A, resolution for 2018 legislative agenda, if the clerk would read.
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout relating to the city of Topeka's legislative agenda for the 2018 legislative session.
City manager.
Thank you. Tonight, Whitney Damrin is here also to go over the legislative agenda. I'll ask Whitney to come forward at this point and discuss a few of the key critical issues that we see as the upcoming legislation.
Thank you, Mayor Will Gass.
Thank you, City Manager Trout. Congratulations, mayor, and members of the council who are new and those who are returning. I'm Whitney Damrin. I'm your lobbyist, in case a few that we haven't met, but look forward to working with the city of Topeka for another year. I've worked back with the city manager and the deputy city manager on the legislative agenda, and we were in front of you in December, and this is a follow-up, and I think you have that proposed resolution in front of you. In 2017, the legislature came to town and they had a handful of things that they had to do, and they were major policy pieces. They had to do a tax bill by all intents and measures because the budget was so far out of balance. They had to do a school finance bill because they had a two-year block grant program that had gone away, they had a Supreme Court telling them, "You got to fix school finance," and they had to do a budget, which it was time again to do a two-year budget. They finished those items, it took them 113 days, which tied the record from two years before. So they're hopeful in coming back in 2018 and not spending quite so much time in Topeka. They just have one issue they really have to deal with this year, school finance. Could be a little more challenging than it was last year. They have a Supreme Court opinion that they believe could require the state to put some $600 million back into K through 12 education. I don't think the legislature will find that much money, either through tax increases, which is not very popular in an election year, or in putting all of that kind of money in in one year. We'll see how they proceed. They're trying to come up with essentially additional expert opinion to look at what we're spending on school finance and maybe come up with something to address the Supreme Court. They have a deadline of April 30, 2018, of which to respond back to the Supreme Court, so if you back that up to when legislation has to be passed, you're looking at mid-March. Attorney General said, "I want it by March 1." Legislature leadership said, "That's probably not possible." I think they're going to try to look at something March 15, but we'll see how that goes. But that will be the biggest overriding issue of the 2018 legislative session. Obviously, the city of Topeka has issues of interest, many other interest groups do as well. I think a number of issues could get pushed back this session just because there's so much focus on education. Things will move probably more rapidly than they have in the past, and there will be some bills that just, quite frankly, get left behind. Some of the issues the city of Topeka is looking at is the abandoned housing issue, that's been around about three years, we've been front and center on that from the city of Topeka. During the interim, we've worked with both House and Senate committee chairs who deal with this subject matter, probably looking at starting in the House this year. I know the Senate remains interested, but it's been in the Senate for the last session, and so we look at perhaps starting in the House with Representative Williams from Andover, chairing the local government committee, looking at it this session. I was approached tonight, or today as a matter of fact, by one of the senators who's kind of been on the other side and had their own ideas on the subject matter, that we questioned whether it was workable late in the session last year, but wants to work with us, wants to see if we can try to come to some kind of agreement. I said, "We're always willing to meet and talk," and so we will look to put that meeting together in the next week and see if that's something that's workable. I certainly will bring that back to the city manager, deputy city manager's office in the city of Topeka and see if that's something that's workable or not. We still have support from League of Kansas Municipalities and other cities in the state on that issue as well. Support efforts to find some additional money for mental health services. As indicated when I was here in December, there is a working group looking at trying to find some ways to find some new money for that, and we will be engaging with them and see what we can do to help in the legislative process, and look forward to what the governor has to say about that issue tomorrow night when he gives his State of the State and then releases the budget on Wednesday. League of Kansas Municipalities' agenda, it's pretty generic this year, not a lot of big ask issues, the things that are in there, we've seen them before. I think we remain in support of those, but they don't have a big legislative ask this session. They may get into the issue that I referenced in December about the liquor tax issue that is due to go into effect April 1 of 2019 because of the change in the beer laws. That legislation probably gets introduced this week. And then looking at law enforcement agencies and who is responsible for prisoner healthcare costs, and I believe in visiting with the city attorney's office, that came about through a Supreme Court opinion. I've reached out to the league, asked them to survey their cities to see if they're having similar issues. I know they are, I've not got a report back from them, but in visiting with their executive director and then their number two over there, they indicated they would do that and come back and see if we can have some consensus and find some ways to try to deal with that issue coming up this year as well. Every Thursday during the session, the league hosts a municipal lobbyist luncheon, so to speak, that starts off this week. We'll get an idea of what other cities and counties are proposing in the way of legislation this year. We've shared the league agenda and the Kansas Association of Counties' agenda with the city, but when we see individual city and county agenda items that may be of interest to the city, we'll share those back with them as well, and they may be something that the city wants to take a look at. Happy to stand for questions.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Damrin? Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, mayor. Hello, sir. Good to see you again. Somewhere in the past, we had talked about scrap metal and things like that. Are those issues still around?
The issues have been around, they have They have tweaked that law, and there actually were some efforts in the last session to kind of roll back the Scrap Metal Act because of some challenges with creating the database at the Attorney General's Office. Those bills did not pass. I'd be happy to revisit with the Attorney General's Office as to where they're at on that, but I've not heard of any new legislation. I know I work pretty closely with a number of utilities, representing a few myself, and they get very interested in scrap metal issues because of the impact on electric and telecommunications facilities in particular.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Dameron?
I would move to approve.
Do I have a second? Do we have any discussion on the item? Councilwoman Hiller?
I have just a couple of things, and they're not really questions for Mr. Dameron, but I did want to make a couple of points. I think people know that I raised a number of issues when we discussed this a couple of weeks ago. I really appreciate the feedback from staff. I'm also aware that by the time we addressed this, it was late to do checking with other cities and colleagues and so on. So I have comments on a couple of those points and then a suggestion for future. On the point, one of the questions I raised had to do with the state law changing, allowing people to put election signs in the public right-of-way. Apparently, there's still some research that needs to be done. I thought that the state law outlawed all of us, that we couldn't home rule out of it, but there were some cities who did. So staff advises me that there may still need to be some homework done to see if we've got the right to do it. It's just a local issue. So I assume we'll get some feedback when the time comes. I also, after I raised those issues, had some questions about guns. We've had reports from our law enforcement that of 109 gun thefts from motor vehicles in the last year, 81% of them were in unlocked cars. They were sitting out in the vehicles, and the vehicles were not secure. My understanding is that since we had our meeting, that there are some people in Lawrence that want to run something about guns being left unattended in public places. And so I certainly hope that if there's some way to effectively address leaving guns unattended in motor vehicles, maybe that's something that could be considered if gun legislation comes up. The procedural suggestion I'd like to make is that we did start late this year, and I would suggest that in 2018, we have our first consideration of our legislative agenda in July or roughly the first week of August. By that time, the legislative session's over, our budget's pretty well set. But the League of Kansas, we really rely on the League of Kansas Municipalities to give us information and to collaborate. And the league does a meeting, invites all the cities who want to work on the legislative agenda to come in mid-August here in Topeka. We often have not participated. And if we started our work and kind of fleshed out whether anybody on the council wanted to participate in that, the timing would be good in August. Then if we could set an internal deadline to finish our legislative agenda in November or December at the latest, what happens is that the League of Kansas Municipalities meets in October and finalizes their agenda, which we generally adopt by reference. Again, that gives us a chance to participate and collaborate. By December, our legislative delegation invites everyone to come and visit with them about our legislative agenda, and we haven't had ours done in time the last couple of years. So I would suggest an August to November, December rhythm for us in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hiller. Any other comments or questions? Councilwoman Clear?
I don't know who this goes to. You said we didn't participate in which one, July?
August.
August? Why do we not?
We did.
We haven't always. It's a rule.
Deputy City Manager Gerber?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman, we've traditionally participated in that, both myself and the mayor. And I know Councilwoman Schwartz has also participated. I, myself, participated, probably for the past 15 years in various roles in other cities, including Topeka. So we've typically been represented.
And the league typically has four policy meetings during that timeframe. And there's a couple of them that I attend that are directly related to kind of what we do with the City of Topeka, and then there are others that are really not so much, kind of in the legislative wheelhouse.
I stand corrected. Mayor Walgast and I went about three years ago, and it was the first time anybody had gone from Topeka in a long time. So that has stuck with me, and we haven't had our discussions as a body prior to that meeting that I can remember. So.
We will absolutely take note. Any other comments or questions from the body? Seeing none, I think that at this point in time, we have a motion and a second, and the clerk would let us know when we're ready to vote.
We have 10 ayes. Motion carries.
Okay, now we move forward to non-action items. We're moving into discussion of 2015 International Building Code, the 2015 Life Safety Code, and the 2015 International Fire Code. If the clerk would read.
A is a discussion providing an update on the 2015 International Building Code, International Fire Code, and Life Safety Code.
City Manager Trout?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, Richard Faulkner is here to present relative to the consideration of these codes. Our Director of Development Services.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm here also with Fire Marshal Mike Martin and the Chairman of the Board of Building, Fire, and Appeals, Keith Finney. We've done a collaboration and making a recommendation to the body to adopt the 2015 International Building Code, 2015 International Fire Code, and the 2015 National Fire Protection Association Life Safety Code. City of Topeka has these codes in place to protect life and property within our community. These codes have been reviewed by city staff and the Board of Building, Fire, and Appeals, along with consultation from the legal department. These adopted, proposed codes that we're adopting would be affecting commercial development in our community. It would not affect one- and two-family homes only if the residential dwellings are within a commercial structure, then these codes would be applied. As I mentioned, the Board of Building, Fire, and Appeals is spearheading this adoption. That board is made up of contractors in our community, architects in our community, and engineers in our community. So they have vetted the code to look at the things that they felt were pertinent to our community and those that they felt we could do without. So, once again, they spearheaded this recommendation. Why we're going to the 2015 and not the 2018, the code cycle is a three-year cycle. There's no new code every year. There's a code cycle every three years. So basically, this is the third cycle. We're coming from the 2006 to the 2015. Seems like a big jump, but a lot of code changes that we're having now are very minor. There's not much of a change in each code, so even though we're going to the 2015 and not the 2018, it still would take a considerable amount of time to go through the codes. I didn't bring the code book to you, but it's not a light read. We'll be going to the 2015, hopefully, depending on your decision, and this will just be a code change. We're not affecting any of our administrative procedures on how we operate. It would just be to adopt the code. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Which committee is responsible for this? Our building codes cause significant issues in the business community, and I would like to have the committee of the council do a full review of those before we adopt anything. We have significant problems in our codes, and I appreciate the work you all have done, but I expect that without a full review by the governing body, this will continue to plague the builders and our commercial developers in this city. And I really think we should take a good, hard look before we make any changes, especially of this magnitude. So I realize this is not an action item tonight. I will be making that motion next week that it is sent to a committee. My question is, which one does it need to go to? My assumption is Public Health and Safety, but it's very timely to have this conversation, absolutely, because our city is on the cusp of this huge revitalization, and building codes are absolutely a huge part of the driver of that. So your timing is impeccable, but I feel like the council needs to take a very, very serious deep dive into our building codes before we just approve something. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clear?
I have a couple of questions. First, I know nothing about building code or fire. This would, I would not be a good one. And I don't know who on here would have, I mean, they were on this committee, right? People that comprise members of the Board of Building and Fire.
We had architects, engineers, and contractors within our community on that.
I'm not going to override them. But regardless of that, why aren't we using the 2018? Why aren't we waiting until?
Just generally, the code, when it comes out, there's always some things that need to be tweaked, some things that need to be worked out.
So get this done, and then?
Yeah, well, a code cycle, like I mentioned, is every three years. So even though 2018 is just now coming out, there are some things in there that we haven't had a chance to vet. The code book is quite massive, and to go through each one of those things like the committee does takes some time for us to do it. So even if we adopted 2018, it wouldn't be in 2018 for us to go through that process. It probably wouldn't be to 2019.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you, Mayor. I also second what Mr. Jensen said. As you know, Mr. Faulkner, we had a lot of emails back and forth this week, and I appreciate you getting back to me on those things. But I have seen significant frustration in our building community trying to wade through. There seems like, much as there was with the animal ordinances we had, there seems like there's a lot of conflicting things. People don't necessarily know when they have to go to development for a permit or engineering for a permit. So I think there are a lot of things we could clean up. I do agree with Mrs. Clear that there are a lot of things in fire that I necessarily couldn't speak to, but I think especially the building code, a lot of it's just administrative things in here that I think, which I would suggest maybe is a Policy and Finance Committee type of thing, with maybe the fire code goes to Public Health and Safety. So that's my two cents, but I would support that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for you. What, if we're looking to approve the 2015 code, what are we working under right now?
2006.
So what, if we're working on the 2006 right now and it's done every three years, correct?
Yes.
Why are we not under the 2015 as of right now, then?
I can't answer that one. I just. It's, yeah. It actually, the best practices and standards are to wait about three code cycles. Instead of trying to adopt and keep current every year, you do that about three code cycles. So we're right at the point where we should be adopting the 15. If you look at it, every three years, a new code comes out, and you, generally speaking, the standard in the country is to wait three cycles before you update.
Nine years, then, before you update?
Right. We're a little behind, but.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Jensen?
To respond to Mrs. Clear, you're absolutely right. We are not experts in code, but it's our responsibility to listen to our constituents and the folks out there and make decisions on their behalf. And unless we do that, we can't. And my intent in deferring this to a committee is to give us the opportunity to actually hear from the experts and find out what their frustrations are and work through and make sure that procedurally, from one end to the other, we're a well-oiled machine, because currently, we are not. And it's hampering business in this community. It's significantly affecting our ability to move the community forward. This is absolutely critical to the future of our city that we get right, and I think on those grounds, it warrants a further review. Not to say that your team hasn't done excellent work. I'm sure they have, but this is just that critical. We can't afford to screw it up.
Can I respond?
If we allow Councilwoman to do it first, then you can respond.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a series of questions. I do deal with code a lot, and I'll ask some big-picture ones this evening and probably save the specifics for later. It looks like that's what will happen. You made a comment when you introduced this. This is the building code. This is the uniform building code, correct?
Yes, along with the International Fire Code.
Correct. And you said that they applied only to commercial and not residential. Isn't that code what we use to build and rehab everything?
No. We have an international residential code as well. It just addresses residential use. This is for the commercial use.
And so it separates, I mean, as Councilwoman Clear pointed out, I mean, we're not looking at the whole thing, so it may help us to see the picture and the list. I'm not sure I've seen that we had a separate residential code versus a commercial code. We do the International Property Maintenance Code, which is part of that family, applies to everything, even vacant land. And so we're used to seeing sort of a one-size-fits-all. So I had that question for you. It will be helpful for us, you know, even things like driveways, which really caught my eye, because we've had a lot of driveway problems from the constituent perspective. And so if what we were looking at only applies to commercial, I need reassurance about what's happening with residential. Couple of the other overlay questions are, some of the text in the changes that you actually gave us talked about a uniform code for building preservation and made reference to our city's code. Do we have that? There were two places.
Conservation? We have a code for conservation that we, a conservation code that we apply to existing structures.
It called it, I think, Uniform Code for Building Preservation, but either way, I didn't know we had one. And we've been, I've been advised that we should in terms of historic preservation and making sure that we had standards to keep buildings from deteriorating. So I'm just checking.
This wouldn't address preservation code.
We'll follow up, then, on that. There also were some, a whole series of, like, electrical and plumbing that gave some exceptions where people didn't have to get permits or didn't have to go by the code, or there were some amendments, things that they didn't have to get permits for. We have talked for years in Topeka about having a rehab code. Are those exceptions intended to allow the more handyman and do-it-yourself kind of thing, or is that not?
Any electrical plumbing work that's not exempt requires a permit. What is in the code, if you own your residence and you live in your residence, you can get a permit to do that work. However, if you don't live, if it's a rental property, you have to hire licensed contractors. That's, is that what you're referring to?
Well, there wasn't, all we got given was the amendments, and so I was kind of fishing for what that big picture actually looked like, what we're really talking about. So I appreciated that Councilman Emerson mentioned the businesses, or Councilman Jensen, I guess, or both. Did you all, were you all involved in the meeting with the businesses? There was a meeting held within the last couple of months where there'd been some kind of public complaints about the building code process. Were you involved in that, and/or did you get the feedback from that meeting to consider?
No, ma'am.
And also, about three years ago, maybe, there was, maybe longer, because you'd know whether or not you were here for it, there was a very intensive process that building, that Development Services went through regarding energy conservation elements of the building code. And that was, there was a really deep collaboration with the home builders to do that at the time, and they came forward. And so we really upgraded and made a lot of changes to our code at that time for energy conservation. I wondered if those were coming forward with the jump to 2015.
That was just, they're saying that was just residential and not commercial. Once again, this is the commercial code that we're adopting today or proposing.
I'll hold the rest. Thank you. That gives me a better framework. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Mays, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for being here. Would it be possible to get a list of what version of the code other cities of the first class in Kansas have?
Yes. I've actually did some preliminary research on that, and quite a few of them, the ones, I can get that for you, quite a few of them are under the 2018. So, but I can, I can do that.
Councilwoman Clear?
This may be a dumb question. Okay, so these are international codes.
Correct.
What do we change about these international codes?
That's why we have, we go through the process of adopting them. We go through and make sure that it's, we don't adopt the whole code. We take those things that'll work best for the City of Topeka, and those things that don't, we don't adopt those.
And it took you one year.
Yes.
And it's going to take us how long to go to committee?
One year.
And I would expect a year. I mean, again, business is one of the most critical aspects of our community.
Councilman Jensen.
We can't afford to screw this up.
Okay. Are there any other comments with regards to this topic?
He had something.
Go ahead. I think what you find, I'm a structural engineer. I'm a third-generation structural engineer, and have worked 40 years in the City of Topeka. I was on the committee that adopted the 97 UBC. I was chairman of the committee that adopted the 2006 IBC, because there's no longer a uniform building code, because everybody went to the international codes. And I'm currently chairman of the committee that's proposing the adoption of the 2015 codes. We don't go into administrative items. The architects, the engineers, and the contractors that are on our committee, they go through the code itself and define meanings and those types of things. And if there's things that don't make sense for the City of Topeka, we exclude that from the code. That's, that is exactly what we do. But what, generally speaking, you have problems with, with the general public is the permitting issue and how long it may take to get a permit. And that's more administrative, and that's not what we're talking about tonight. That is not what the building code talks about. It talks about how you design the building and to what parameters you need for fire safety, for life safety, whether, you know, what type of building you have, school, etc., have different types of those structures, and architectural elements. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about anything but the code itself and how it affects the building, and not anything administrative about, about that. So I'm not sure the value you would have, having a committee talking about the code. You may have a committee talk about your administrative issues, but not necessarily the code itself. And I would be able to answer any questions for me, if you have any.
Councilman Jensen.
If I could respond. I have, from personal experience, several instances where I was required to do several things by the city that did not make common sense, and it wasn't administrative, it was a building code specific, like running 400 feet of grounding line from one end of a building to the other, because it had, it was required to be attached to the water line where it entered the building on the opposite side of where the electrical service did. That doesn't make sense. There's no reason for that to be in the code. That's just an example. That's not an administrative issue at all.
I beg to differ. I think that's exactly required and should be required for lightning protection for your building. So I actually, respectively, disagree with that requirement. I think it needs to be gone, gone with that. So from that standpoint, I don't, I don't agree with you.
I'd be interested to see your science behind why you think that's better than just a straight ground off of West R. But we can debate that.
Councilman Jensen, yes. I think that it just seems that council has a lot of questions. At this point in time, this is an item for discussion only tonight, which is wonderful, because this is what this is supposed to bring, people having discussion and having questions. It just seems like there's a lot more conversation to happen from council to staff. City manager, if you would like to comment on how we would proceed?
I agree. I think right now, even just talking briefly with the deputy manager, there's a lot of information here as to what we're looking to provide to the council for consideration. And I think we need to do a real good job of identifying what we're being asked to have you approve, and then what issues that you're bringing up that aren't being addressed by it, and then analyze that and then provide you a good answer back that clearly delineates what we're asking you to approve, so that you'll better understand what this item is for consideration. I think that the questions that were brought forward by Councilmember Emerson and others are things that we can look at. I'll get with staff. We may delay...
Delay.
...bringing this back to a future meeting in, the first meeting in February versus this. We'll analyze it and determine whether or not we have been able to pull this information together where you can clearly understand what we're being asked to approve. And I think we can also look at the administrative functions that you're concerned about, delineate those in the sections of the code, and ask that that be referred to committee instead of the technical issues relative to the code sections.
Thank you very much. And I hope that the committee understands, this is something that, as we were running for office, we heard a lot about the concerns. It was very public that there was this content at the commercial level with, with our application, and even the service administration of policy, and this is something that is very important. So that being said, I think that we will receive some agenda notifications to let us know how long we'll delay this, and we'll proceed in conversations. Are there any other questions? Councilwoman Heller?
At the risk of giving myself some work, since I know I have a long list, in order to help the city manager and deputy, do we all need to submit any questions that we have right now to them within the next couple of days, so they know what's out there?
That would be judicious.
Yeah, I would suggest that.
City manager?
My last comment I have is, I have that information they referred to regarding the meeting that was dealt with some of the developers in the community, and I'll share that with staff. Been many things going on, and I haven't had the opportunity to delve into that part of the discussion, and I will now that we're at this point.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I know that several council members asked for some information. I would hope that all of us would get that information, so, because I have some questions too, but I would like to look at what they have.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions from the body? Councilman Lesser?
Not to belabor the point, but when a new, when there's a lot of, for instance, in my industry, and I know other industries, when, when there is a revamping of a policy or a manual, those change, there's usually a document that comes out that shows, highlights what the changes are from the previous manual. Is there one of those that shows what the differences are between the last two?
If you look in, I thought for sure there were some highlighted sections that what we were changing, spelled out in the ordinance, talks about what we're, what we're changing, which we're not accepting, that's spelled out in the ordinance.
Madam Mayor?
I think the issue is that we don't have anything that tells us what's the difference from 2006 to 2015. So we're kind of in a void, not knowing, I mean, what you gave us is tweaky stuff that we don't know what the, what the changes are that we're not seeing.
Point of order.
Councilman Lesser?
What I was looking for was just a document that had a cross through of what the changes were made between the two, the previous. Is there something that, like that, that exists?
We actually attended a ICC International Code Council class that, that brought us up from the 2006 to the 2015. So in that, I'd be happy to give you a copy of what those changes were. It's a three-ring binder, and it's probably about yay-thick, and we went line by line with the, with the code review committee and discussed each one of those. But I'd be happy to make a copy of what we got from the ICC for you to look at. Primarily, what we're dealing with is, is small changes in wording, and I think the biggest thing we see between the 2006 and the 2015 is bringing it more in line with the building code, so that it leaves less room for interpretation between the two codes. But we do have some material. I don't know if we have every possible thing, but we did go through classes, and we do have some material that we specifically reviewed with the BBFA as far as what those changes were.
And forgive me, because I'm just trying to understand the process here, but how long have we been working on, looking at the 15?
It's been a year. Started January of 2017. And what happened was, as we went through the process, fortunately or unfortunately, city got busy, and it was staff, development services, we were the coordinator of bringing everybody together, and so we weren't always able to meet on a regular basis. Also, the public contractors, they were busy.
Sure.
So that, that kind of extended the time a little longer than it needed to be because of the busyness in our community.
And I understand that. So if that was the case, why wouldn't we just, if it was already 17, we knew that that 18 was coming out, why would we have not just waited to do the due diligence then, then go into something three years older?
Just because of, even though we went to the 15...
We're not to the 15 yet, though, right?
No, no, even though we're looking at going to the 15.
Right. But we started that in January of 17, and the 18 was getting ready to come out, correct? Okay, that's all I had.
14 is...
That's all I had. Thank you.
Any other questions from the body?
When we began.
Any other final wrapping-up statements?
I'd just like to say, we actually began our research on the code change in 14. And so we began getting our training and going through line by line of the code and getting the stuff together so we could go before the BBFA. We're the supporting people, and they're the subject matter experts. So as we went through and identified those code changes, it took us a while to get, to get everything organized. So it is, it is a long process, and it's not something that's, that's easily done or can be done quickly, and that's the reason why you see the gap.
So I guess, then, so, so we started in 14, or we started in January of 17? Because I've heard both here.
Point of order.
We started the meetings at 14, but they started the review in 14.
Yeah.
Okay.
The BBFA didn't, the BBFA did not start, Mortar Billings Fire Appeals did not start the review until January of last year. However, the city had been studying this for a lot longer than that, in order to make presentations to us as to the changes, etc. I attended the same classes that our fire marshal did, and to listen to that. It's a long process, and I, this is the third time I've done it, and it just takes a while. If it is the city council's desire to adopt the, to look at the 18, we probably won't be coming back to you until sometime in 19, in 19, 2019, excuse me.
Well, it seems like we have a lot of discussion to do on this item, and it seems like there's a lot of discussion that has to happen between staff, and it definitely seems like we're going to have a delay on this item for the next meeting in the agenda. So are there any comments from the council, so we can wrap this one up? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Who would think that codes are so passionate? Very important things, absolutely. So at this point in time, we proceed with announcements, and the city clerk would read for the future agenda.
For the January 16th agenda, we have one presentation. It says levy project update. On the consent agenda, we have a couple special events resolutions. For action items, we have the election for the deputy mayor, Jeddah Board members, and MTPO Policy Board members. We initially had the ordinances on for the life safety code, IFC, and the international building code. Those will be delayed. And then we have a resolution for a conditional use permit for a new pump station on Northwest Town Street.
Thank you, city clerk. City manager, do you have any announcements?
The only comments I have is, I'd like to thank council members that were able to make the open public meeting to meet our candidates, and also the citizens that showed up. It was a good attendance, and the information and guidance that I've received has been very good, and I'm just working through the decision-making process now.
Thank you, city manager.
Sorry, can I make a quick comment? If you all could sign your little oaths of office for Brenda, and just hand them off to her before you leave. She needs to make copies of all those, so I just wanted to make a quick note of that.
Thank you very much. I would like to make a few statements before we go forth with the announcements. It was a privilege to be able to pray over our city with all of you as my last opportunity to do so. I think it was super important for us to start the tone right with, with the message of unity. I think that having the poem that poet, the poet Billings wrote with regards to how we are to conduct ourselves in a manner of loving compassion. It seems interesting, a statement of loving compassion coming from a municipality and a city, but I think is completely important, because our job is to ensure that every single citizen, every single citizen, I have gusto when I do the pledge of allegiance, because I say "oh" with an accent, "all" with an accent, are taken care of and feel like they are protected. We are about to embark on a wonderful journey. I want to welcome the new members of the council. I am excited at the things that you all are going to bring, your experiences, your points of view that are very different with your backgrounds and your professions. I want to say a thank you to the council members that were re-elected. I think it shows the support that you have from your community and the exemplary work that you have been doing tirelessly, and also want to say thank you to the council members that remain. I think that, you know, we have two more years of work, a lot of work that we have to do in our community. We have heard in the last few months of tensions in our city. We have also heard of great things happening in our community. We have development that's occurring. We have amazing things happening downtown, and I think that we all have to let our public know that we are listening. As you saw today, we're having really meaty conversations with regards to code. It's because we heard you. We're hearing conversations about people in our community not feeling safe. We hear you. We're hearing conversations about people wanting to go ahead and grow our city and get involved. We want you to become involved. So, so my statement to all of you today is, we need you. I've been going around the community, talking to people, and I've been saying, we need you. We lost a giant, Sally Zellers, and, you know, the work that she did in this community was remarkable, and the work was done by a woman who was able to have the wings of being a superhero because she had a community behind her. So I encourage all of you, as we start this year, to find your wings, to find where your passion is at, and to become involved, because this community needs you, and I certainly need you as well. So the next in line would be Councilwoman Padilla, because Councilwoman Five, District Five had the prayer, so.
What, opposing?
For announcements.
You don't have to talk.
I don't know that there's much else to say, except that I completely agree with the, the tone that I hear right now, and that's why I've been looking forward to it. I think I said it to Mike Lesser earlier today. I said, I think it's fortunate to be, but I feel like a part of a team that's here at the right time and the right team to get some things done with the City of Topeka, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have been described as the dream team council, and I could not be more excited to serve with all of you. The mayor is right, we have two solid years to get as much done as we can before some of us have to run again, and I think we should absolutely make that our credo. Cheers to all of us. We have an incredible amount of work to do, but I think this is the team that can get it done, and I look forward to serving with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Councilman Mays?
I don't know that I have a whole lot to add, but I'm really looking forward to the next four years, working with every, or two years in some cases, but maybe, but really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Mike. Welcome here. Welcome, Mike. Good to meet you. Just want to say that this is a, this is really a rewarding job. It's nice to drive around town and say, you know, even in such a microscopic way, I had something to do with the new Rezers Building, or Federal Home Loan Bank, or the park downtown, the Plaza, things like that. It's going to be nice to, in 10 years, take your kids or grandkids, wherever you are, down to these places that you actually had something to do with. So it is a rewarding job.
Councilman Lesser?
I don't have much to add. I'm just looking forward to working with each and every one of you, as well as the staff, and I appreciate all the help you've helped me so far in getting up to speed, and looking forward to moving on. Thank you.
Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. It's exciting. I hadn't heard the dream team part, but I think everyone in the community is saying, man, it looks like that council's going to be really good, and I have proudly and honestly said, yeah, I think so. I think we're going to do great. I don't know about tireless. Sometimes you're going to get tired. This is a lot of work, but I agree with Councilman Cohen. It's, sometimes you don't see that work, because it's all those water lines and sewer
Sometimes you don't see that work, because it's all those water lines and sewer lines that are buried down under stuff, the things that keep us literally up at night. It's one of the hardest jobs in many ways, because we are here, we don't get away, we don't go to DC and come back, and, you know, we're here all the time personally. I like that. That's why I'm still here, because you get to tell those constituents, too, if there's something, you're going to catch me at the grocery store, you're going to catch me out on the street, we'll make it happen, or we'll hash it out, you know, if somehow there's a couple points of view, and I like that. It's been worth it, and I'm really glad to be back. I'm going to give a quick shout out. I didn't have family here today. I told my boys maybe they could all come this time for me for the third time, but today is my grandson Garrett's first birthday in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and they weren't going to split up and they couldn't come. So shout out to my team and to my family. Thank you.
Councilwoman clear.
Welcome. It's, I want to announce that it's a pleasure and an honor that I was asked to serve on the advisory council to the Shawnee County Jail's reentry program, along with a lot of other outstanding people, a couple of them, Sheriff Jones, Commissioner Cook. I'm really excited for this, and I will update and see how the city can be supportive of this endeavor.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. First, I wanted to welcome Commissioner Cook out there in the audience. Welcome. And to Sheriff Jones as well, welcome to our meeting. And you miss Batman. To my colleagues, I say welcome aboard. Mike, if you have any problems out of Mr. Henderson, just raise your hand. I know how to deal with him. To Aaron, Elaine always made homemade treats, so you're going to have to-
That's right, you're a national.
At all the time, just because. And to my colleague, I got to get used to him. I'm used to Richard sitting over there, so I'm looking for him, but he was a man with little words, but anyway, welcome. I want to thank all of my constituents for allowing me to be here another four years and giving me another opportunity, and I just wanted to say thank you to them. Also, to the city manager, I have a little issue that I wanted to bring up. If you go to 10th and Golden, between 10th and 11, where our snow piles have plowed all that snow, I can't believe we had that much snow, but there's an elderly house there, and I can't remember. You'll see it. And what this has done is melted, and it's melted in their driveway, because what they've done is they've come from 10th Street, and they pushed it and they left it. And they've done the same on Golden. So there's two huge piles, and it's slowly melting, and it's made their driveway a sheet of ice. This is an elderly couple, and this man needs to get out, and his family needs to be able to get him out. I don't know if we can have the street department go out and break, I mean, it's thick. It's thick, and the pile is still really, really high. So if we can have them go out and put some de-icer or something, because for some reason it's not going in that drain, it's just froze, okay? And then in the future, if we can kind of look at where we, there's a couple of empty fields there, if we can kind of see where we leave those big piles, so when they melt, that would be great. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I don't have much of a voice tonight, which I know will disappoint no one. Yes, hold your applause. I would like to thank my constituents for allowing me to continue to serve. It's been a real pleasure, and I really look forward to Mike and Aaron up here. I have the opportunity to attend the new councilmember orientation with these gentlemen, and three very impressive guys, and I think we're going to have a fantastic, the next two years up here will be fantastic. So thank you, everyone.
We're done with the public comment, and at this point in time with the announcements, it is humbling being up here, by the way. Now we proceed with the public comment. The clerk will-
Well, what a way to start the year. Welcome. Congratulations. I wanted to start it off with you all and make a few comments, but I want to tell you you have my support. And what I want to do, as I come up and speak with you from time to time, is to be a positive part of the conversation. And I don't come up here to lecture, I come up here to talk and to interchange ideas. Mayor De La Isla, Michelle, we've known each other a long time, and I remember back when, years ago, you said, I have a goal, become mayor. My compliments and congratulations.
Thank you.
I have big hopes for you, as we all do, as with everybody. Realize that we've reset the leadership of this city. We have a new city manager, police chief is coming, fire chief, 501 is fairly new, head of the chamber, Go To Peak, is fairly new, new mayor, and part of the council's been reset. In two years, we'll finish the reset, and we'll continue to move this momentum forward. I wanted to tell Manager Trout, welcome, as another citizen. I haven't had a chance to meet you, but I have great hopes for you, and I wish you well. There are a lot of people that some of you may not know that are going to come and go and provide you with information. They're not here to just give you lip service, they're here to give you input to make decisions. Joe Ledbetter, Carol Marple, Betty Phillips, Marg Jerrons, people of that quality and other people. When they come up present, LaZongre's, they want your courtesy and time, because they're here to be a part of the process, and to be respected with that, and I know you will. I'm very excited about the future as I look around, and I've met a lot of you, and during the campaign 2017 was a rugged year for a lot of people, but you made through it, and now you're here. And the future of our community rests with you. And so no pressure there, but you are the ones that make the decisions. Staff recommends, but you make the decisions. The conversation that takes place to get the decision needs to be understood by us on this side of the microphone. And sometimes decisions are made, but the right conversation didn't take place. Doesn't mean the decision wasn't right, just the conversation to get to that decision wasn't there. So I appreciate the code issue. It is a big thing. It not only has to do with the codes, but it has to do with the implementation of the codes and things of that nature. I like what I see. I know most of you personally. I know who you are professionally. This is an extremely exciting moment for this city, and a crossroads that you all are going to take us from point A to point B to point C, etc. And I want to end with this. I wish all of you well, and the best of 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trammell. There are no executive sessions, and at this point in time, the meeting is adjourned.